Anybody else have any guests they'd like to introduce today? No? Then next is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to accept the agenda as presented by the Agenda Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Fisher. Are there any discussion, amendments, or corrections to the agenda? If not, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. Next is the minutes.
Mr. President, I would move for the adoption of minutes from the closed session held on January 23rd, 2014, and the minutes from the business meeting held on the same day. Move for adoption.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bailey.
Second by Mr. Ridenhour. Are there any corrections or discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, the student member concurs. Next we have public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak. Is there anybody who's here who'd like the opportunity to speak? Okay, then we'll move on to new business, the consent agenda. Ms. Freeman?
Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. Two procurement items for your consideration this afternoon. The first item is RFQ 2014-28, Professional Design Services for the Partial Demolition and Repurpose of This Building at 820 Commonwealth Avenue. Pricing for the proposals were based upon the bid that the board approved last year, Bid 2013-33, for on-call architectural engineering services. Companies that were awarded that contract were invited to submit quotes, and that's the recommendation that's in front of the board this afternoon. The specifications require that the design be achieved through the most efficient and cost-effective means and methods available for the deconstruction of this building. The scope of services would involve the demolition of any nonessential aging areas in the building, the mitigation of existing hazardous materials, the separate modification and portioning of the existing facility for the Transportation Department and the Planetarium, additionally to do some grading to those demolished areas, and minimally finish the grounds for safe egress and entrance to the facility. The, again, the design, the architects were encouraged to provide a complete design with an eye for the lowest total possible construction costs to accomplish these objectives. The construction budget for this project has not yet been established. The schedule provides for the design and bidding of this work in mid-spring, with demolition and remodeling to occur in July through September of 2014, final completion in October '14, and that, of course, is contingent upon progress of design as we work through those important decisions that the board will be making regarding this facility. The Procurement Review Committee has reviewed these proposals and recommends we can move forward with the lowest bidder, Bushy Fight Morin Architects of Hagerstown, at a lump-sum total cost of $65,988. The summary of the details of the price proposals is provided in an attached report for your information. The second bid for your consideration this afternoon is a request for proposal 2014-49 to design and build the playground for M.K. Dow Elementary School. Three proposals were received. The maintenance staff is responsible for removing the existing spring toys that are currently in disrepair on the school grounds, and they would be providing the wood fiber safety. Otherwise, the contractor would be responsible for all labor materials, equipment to produce the new playground at M.K. Dow Elementary School. Work would begin immediately after word of the contract, with final completion by the end of April, in time, hopefully, for the fifth graders at the school to also enjoy this new playground. The recommended proposal was decided by a selection committee with a strong consideration for the high quality of the play activities, the appropriateness of play activities, and the appearance and aesthetics of the playground. M.K. Dow posted actually renderings of all three of these proposals on their website for viewing and voting, so we have a very scientific selection of the proposal that was determined to serve the best interests of the school by the school's students and some of the parents and staff who also voted, who chose overwhelmingly the same proposal that the selection committee did. That said, we are recommending we move forward with the proposal from Playground Specialists at a total cost of $48,679.50.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase of Architectural Services to Bushy Fight Morin to design the demolition of the administration building at $65,988, and the bid proposal submitted by Playground Specialist for the playground for M.K. Dow in an elementary at $48,679.50.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Bailey.
Second by Mr. Ridenhour. Are there any discussion on the consent agenda? Any questions? Mrs. Harshman?
I just had a question about the playground equipment. Where it says height of tallest platform, they have eight feet. Is that standard? Because the others were under that, and that seems off the hype if an elementary student fell.
Yeah, we have installed playgrounds with eight-foot platforms before. I'm probably not the best person to answer, but I can, I can tell you, based on other playground installations, that that is not, doesn't exceed what we've typically installed in an elementary school.
Excuse me, when we visualize a platform where that's actually a platform of the height, that may be something that you're hanging off of a bar or something like that, possibly. The other thing is a safety issue. We'll be told how much mulch and surface area they'll need to have as a fall zone, and we'll abide by all those safety regulations and things.
Okay.
Very standard stock playgrounds.
It was just a little odd that it was, there was a big difference between it and the other two, so that's why. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions? Mrs. Brightman?
Just a comment on the playground bid as well. Part of that, that was local match, that was QZAP money from the state with the local match, and a lot of that match is volunteer time, and Washington County, with the leadership of the Facilities Department, has made very good use of QZAP funds. And I would, and for the public to know, that's money that can only be spent in qualified areas. I believe the school has to be 35 percent or above free and reduced meals, and/or it has to be in a federal enterprise zone area. And the point is, there are two companion bills going through Annapolis right now to fund QZAP, so that might be an opportunity for our quick-response team to put a letter together and show support for those two bills. Since Washington County seems to be on the leading edge of how to use that and access that money, I think it would be great for us to, to do that, so I just throw that out.
Are there other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. There's no superintendent's report on the agenda, but Dr. Wilcox has something he'd like to offer.
Thank you. It will be very brief, and we'll probably mention this again at the end of the meeting, but this building that we're now sitting in will be closed for district operations as of February 14th, 2014. Simply want to make our community members know, if they have not been following the news, that we will be in our new building at 104, 10,004-35 Downsfield Pike. Our new building will open on February 18th, 2014, that is a Tuesday. The building will be open at 8:00 a.m. I want to point out that this building will still house, or this complex will still hold our transportation facilities, although it will not be a public-facing office, it will be for our transportation team, the logistical team, our mechanics, and our, our drivers. I would also point out that the Brish Auditorium will still be here and staffed on this campus. So I simply wanted to say to our community that we are leaving this building as of February 14th at noon. We will be back up and open on February 18th at our new building on the Downsfield Pike. The first board meeting will be held in that facility on February 18th, the same day that we're opening, and for those of you who want to contact us by telephone or via email, all of our phone numbers and email addresses will remain the same. So if you have it in your Rolodex, or if you have it in your contact list, you'll still be able to reach us throughout the move at the same addresses that you once did. Okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next we have personnel action.
Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review.
Is there a motion to approve the staff changes recommended by staff?
Mr. President, I move for staff recommendation on personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Fisher. Are there any comments or any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the staff changes? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero and the student member abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to reports to the board. Legislative briefing on 2014 legislative session. Ms. Cade?
Mr. Trotta, would you join Ms. Cade, please?
It's nice to have you here, Ms. Cade. You somehow managed, we somehow managed to avoid the bad weather, so.
Yes, yesterday was bad, tomorrow's bad.
Yesterday, exactly.
But here I am. And it is a pleasure, of course, to be here again. It was delightful last week to have Mrs. Harshman, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Wilcox, Mrs. Brightman, all in Annapolis, along with Mr. Trotta, for parts of Legislative Mabe Day and also for Washington County Day. It was a day of great focus, and Annapolis really felt the presence of these U.R. members. We had opportunities at the Mabe luncheon to talk to their, and in the delegation meeting to talk to all of the Washington County delegates. We met informally with some of them and more formally with others, and we had met with many other legislators and state officials. The Speaker, Speaker Bush, really understands education, and is very committed to it, and was impressive, actually, in, in the role he plays in, in making sure that education in Maryland continues to be very strong. Senate President Mike Miller met with us, and he, and we spent most of our time talking about the updating of Thornton, and it was a productive meeting. We met with the Education Subcommittee Chairman, who deals with all the bills that we have in about education, and with the Budget Subcommittee Chairman, again, who's very key. And incidentally, they used the word about the education operating budget as it being on autopilot this year. It looks as if there will not be controversy about the education operating budget. We met with Treasure Cop, who showed special interest in possible downtown revitalization, and really cares about this community, as, as all of these people did. And a very productive meeting with the governor and the lieutenant, the governor's staff, and the lieutenant governor's staff, and their polit, their education policy person, where we had really wide-ranging policy discussions. And you should be very proud of the people who were down there. They, the conversations we had had depth and quality, and it wasn't, "We like this bill, we want that bill." It was, it was really good substantive conversation, and so it was a time well-spent, and people are very aware that Washington County is a place where really interesting things are happening, and that you are making those things happen. So that was a very productive time, and we've missed the rest of you, and perhaps next year you can join us. The Pre-Kindergarten Act apparently will pass. We have not had much discussion about it, the hearings haven't been held, and it's a, it's a, it's really a very narrow bill, because it only funds 1,000 students in pre-K. And those will be divided between the Judy Centers, which are specialized pre-school centers, and the private schools that have certified educators at the pre-K level, and public schools. And so with the thousand spread statewide and divided into three pots, we won't really be feeling a lot of impact, but there is a sense that, that this is going to move, and that this is step one. It's very interesting, some of the education people, public education people feel that the pull will be, or that emphasis will be over to the private schools, and some of the private school people are afraid that it's all going to go to public education. So there will be interesting dialogue going on, and the State Board will be making the grand awards. And Dr. Wilcox was very forceful in suggesting to a couple of these people that we talked to that, that there not be a dibble and a dabble and a two or three here and there, but that they focus on some programs, and sometime he could tell you about what they did in Baton Rouge, which I thought was very interesting. There, there's a lot of discussion, as you know, about the Common Core, the MSA, the Park Assessments, and so forth. And in the legislative meeting, which Mrs. Brightman chaired, we listened to the recommendation of the Mabe Executive Committee, who recommended a, a support of the bill, asking for a waiver for, from MSA, as a message bill, understanding, I believe, that it isn't likely to happen, and the timing makes it not likely to happen, but that this is something that needed to be said. And maybe you would like to speak to that anymore, or should I just draw on?
I think you've characterized the, the meeting well. There was a unanimous support of the two pieces of legislation by the Legislative Committee. So again, I think it was symbolic, and I think everyone realizes that it will most likely go forward. But thank you.
The next bill that I spoke of in my short report has to do with, with a specialized program that, that this county has participated in, that is federal program, that the state needs to pass legislation. Baltimore City doesn't like the legislation. Our people want some amendment to it, and again, Mr. Trotta could be much better to this, because it's far more technical than, than I would care to reveal myself.
Artith is referring to Senate Bill 128, and our Director of Food Services, Jeff Crew, has been requested by the Maryland State Department of Education to offer testimony in favor of the bill. This bill provides an alternative method to determine eligibility for students with regard to the food lunch program. We have used it here on a polit, on a, via politists program, and we find that it benefits our students, and also eliminates a cumbersome paperwork. So we will, we'll be courting our effort, of course, with Dr. Wilcox, the quick-response team, and with MSD with regard to Maryland State Department of Education with regard to this matter.
That hearing is tomorrow, and it will be, again, a fairly technical hearing. Baltimore City's going to be asking for amendments at the governor's office in a conference call that we were part of. The governor's office said they don't like those amendments. So it'll be interesting, and it'll take most of the session to get that sorted out. There is a change in terminology in a lot of pieces of legislation now. Mental health is now being renamed behavioral health. So when you see the, the phrase behavioral health, it means what we have for past years called mental health. And there's one bill, Senate Bill 262, which is a big, long bill, and mostly about the Health Department, and, but buried in it is this little section that talks about education, or is in the education bill, in which it requires that the school systems provide behavioral health services. Well, you know, this sounds kind of, if you're not reading carefully, it doesn't sound scary. But in fact, this would require the incorporation of professional mental behavioral health people in all of your schools, and the fiscal note, this was in last year too and didn't pass, but the fiscal note for, for your school system is over $4 million the first year. And so it's, it's something that really has to be opposed by Mabe, because this, this is a huge fiscal note, an unanticipated fiscal expense, and a, and a change in the, it's one more additional responsibility that education systems would have. So that is something that Mabe will be taking a strong stand against.
Artith, what are you hearing about the chances of that legislation?
Well, since Senator Madalino put the bill in, and he knew last year that, he puts it in for the advocates, I think when the fiscal note is put out on the table, he will be willing to modify it. Because he's a practical man, and he's a budget man, and when you start, if our system is $4 million, you can imagine how, what the statewide fiscal impact would be. And unless it gets funded, for which there are no funds, no resources, it really is a totally unrealistic thing to, to be doing. And Senator Madalino is not an unrealistic person. So I'm optimistic that it'll get taken care of, but I'm an optimist, so, you know. There's a bill that would require that your agendas be published even for your closed meetings, and that's okay, but that you could not change or amend your agenda for a closed meeting, which you sometimes need to do, once, once you have a, if it's been published several days ahead, you have new business come up. And, and so that, I think, will get taken care of. It's, people put things in well-meaning, and sometimes they have effects they don't really realize. And I think this sponsor, Delegate Krebs, will, will be amenable to changing that. There's a best practices bill in, House Bill 413, which Delegate Kaiser, who we met with, and who is the head of the Subcommittee on Education in the House, and Delegate Lukey put in, and it's best practices for IEP notice requirements. And it is a very clear, comprehensive bill that I think is important to have passed, because it may, may preclude action toward transferring the burden of proof from the petitioner to the school system. So we'll be watching that bill closely, and we believe that it is, is overall a very constructive bill. It really doesn't change a lot, it really just defines better what has to be in the IEP material that is presented to, to parents ahead of time.
So are you saying the burden of proof is optional, or?
No, the burden of proof, there's no bill in yet about burden of proof.
Would shift with this? Oh, with that specifically?
That's not in.
That's not in here?
Okay. In terms of updating Thornton, which is one of the things that is, is big, obviously, very big, and which has been put off for a couple of years, there, the State Department of Education is putting out an RFP to have adequacy and equality and all those factors that are in, in the old, old court order and in the Thornton bill, looked at and evaluated. They did pull together for a single meeting what they saw as the stakeholders, and Mabe was involved, and Pazam was involved, and PTAs were involved, and unions were involved, and so forth. But they were really not given a lot of leeway to, to know what's in the RFP. They could express their views on things. It's being done in a very tight withheld manner by, by Department of Education. But they did meet with the stakeholders. That RFP will be coming out in probably a couple of weeks. And then, in a, next year, when there's a new governor, new legislature, they will probably codify a Thornton, a Thornton II commission, who will then take all that data that will be coming forth from this RFP, and evaluate it, and, and make any recommendations on changes to Thornton funding. So this is big-time stuff that is going to be happening over the next couple of years. And of course, we hope that there will be good representation when that does happen from rural, you're not a rural community, but from communities like this, including this community, so that, so that the factors can be looked at from all different perspectives, not just from big cities and so forth. And so that's coming along. The BOSTE bill, I call it the BOSTE bill, the bill that perennially comes in that would allow tax credits to businesspeople who gave money to a nonprofit which made grants to non-public schools for scholarships or materials or whatever, has just got, come in, and it's been introduced again, and again, and again, every year that I've been around, and has not made it through. It is, you know, another step toward funding that goes into non-public schools, and BOSTE, and Mabe has historically taken a strong position against it, because we feel that public money that is available should be going into the public schools. And then there's a funny little bill that has to do with, Antarctica County wants to, the Antarctica County delegation want to have a 13th high school built in Antarctica County, and they are talking about having somebody, a private developer, build it and lease it to them, and there's a question about whether it be a non, the lease payment would be non-recurring expense or regular MOE expense. And so that bill right now would not work well with what you have here in this county relative to the School for the Arts. So we'll be following that. Mabe is already taking a position against the bill, but it probably is one that we particularly will have to look at carefully and make ourselves heard about. And there are lots and lots of other bills, but I'll stop there, because I know you have a long schedule, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Cade?
I would just like to make a comment to Artith, and again, to show my appreciation of all of the legwork you did to set up the meetings that we were able to attend while we were there, and I appreciate you going along, and you have built years of relationship and trust with a lot of these legislators, and it shows when we walk into their office, and, and I, you're, I know your husband was in the, the legislature for how long, 30?
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years. So you've just been a great asset to Washington County, and I, I just wanted to show my appreciation.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And to Mr. Trotta, and, and his assistant, Jamie, did all the preliminary, the paperwork, and it was a big help to be able to reach in and grab something and pretend we, we had it together. And so that was great. We had some great background information that came in, particularly on the pre-K. I think that was significant. And Dr. Wilcox, I didn't know if you had anything to, to add to the two days in Annapolis?
Well, other than to add my thanks to Artith for you opening up Well, other than to add my thanks to Artith for you opening up your Rolodex, what was interesting is that we had access to folks that most people only have the opportunity to read about. I know at the same time, we had a Chamber of Commerce Day, and our day was just littered with talking with those people who make decisions. That was, I think, really the envy of the group that followed us as well. So thank you very much for that. I do think Artith has been a champion for a number of key education issues, and her admonition to watch some of these things unfold should not go unheard, particularly as we look at the school funding bills and the manipulations that perhaps Anarundale is trying to do. I'm also being told that there will be some other local courtesy bills that will have deeper ramifications, similar to the Prince George's County bill last year, that will be coming forward. For those who don't know, Prince George's County moved from an appointed superintendent by the school board to an appointed by the elected board of county commissioners or the chief executive, if you will, of that county. All that said, it may be a perfectly fine form of governance for them, but the bottom line is it really kind of disturbs the balance that I think has been struck over many, many years in Maryland, where we have a great outcome for kids based on an elected school board and their decision around an appointed superintendent. I would also mention that there are another, a number of issues that Artith has pointed out. The pre-K issue is a huge one for us, and I won't go into great detail other than to say that, you know, the admonition that I gave to both the governor's office and some of the delegates that we've met with is that, you know, there is at least the fear of some that this is kind of people trying to get the nose under the proverbial tent, the camel's nose under the proverbial tent, so that private providers can offer pre-K with no real accountability to local school systems. That said, no one is arguing that pre-K isn't an important element for local school districts to have. Having kids coming to school prepared, meeting the kindergarten readiness standards, is absolutely the right direction. But I think we have to make sure that the program is well-designed, and quite honestly, that the program is built in a way that is sustainable over time. All of us here know that the foundation program that allows us to build schools, the CIP, is being operationalized here with great effectiveness and great efficiency. What that means is our school system basically is optimized. We have the right number of seats for the number of kids that we have. We use pretty sophisticated demographic projection tools to roll up so that we have the right number of seats. If all of a sudden we add another 1,300 to 1,400 pre-K kids to the school system, there are space issues that we have to be aware of. Certainly, we wouldn't want to ramp up only to have a program that was not included in the foundation program go away at the next time a legislature faced a shortfall. So lots of things that are out there that are important. Artith gave us great access and visibility on these issues, but I think each of you as board members are going to have to stay tuned in to these conversations and perhaps make some time available to go down to Annapolis to make sure that our delegation, as well as other delegations, know how important this is to Western Maryland and to the great state of Maryland.
Other comments or questions?
One thing you said that struck me, Ms. Kate, is that your emphatic statement about what an optimist you are, if you've been in Annapolis as long as you have and you're still an optimist.
There's hope.
There is really hope for the state, I'll tell you. Or at least it says something about just how optimistic you are.
Maybe that's true. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will see you next month.
We'll look forward to having you back next month.
Again, a new building. And so this is my finale in this building, and it will feel strange to go somewhere else, but I understand it's a really fine building and much more appropriate for the uses and the kind of operation you have.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report to the board on the AVID program, Advanced via Individual Determination. We have Jessica Reinhardt and Beth Moore. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. I'm Jessica Reinhardt. I supervise pre-K through 12 advanced programs. And with me to present today is Beth Moore. She is our college readiness specialist. So we are grateful that you have given us the opportunity to present the data from our 2013 AVID programs. We realize that we did send you a number of documents ahead of time. We wanted to front-load some information, knowing that several of you did not have the opportunity to participate in the initial curriculum instruction committee presentations. So AVID stands for advancement via individual determination. And AVID's mission is to really close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. It is nationally and internationally recognized. It's based on well over 30 years of research surrounding the student achievement, as well as instructional best practices. And one of the things you could see on the slide there that we're sharing with our AVID schools is common core state standards are the what, but the AVID college readiness system is the how. It is a school-wide transformational effort, and it is designed to increase the number of students who do enroll in and succeed in higher education. And I refer to it as a college readiness system. It's going to support our first generation or economically disadvantaged or even our underrepresented collegegoers. So there is a targeted population. In addition, we do identify a cohort of students who actually are enrolled in what is known as the AVID elective course, and they're enrolled in that course through the duration of their time at the, in the middle school or in the high school. The goal of the system is to really look at our determined students who have a goal of attending post-secondary educational experiences, preferably that four-year course. And we teach them with what AVID refers to as WICOR, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organizational, and reading strategies. So it gives them that laser focus on those main components that form the foundation of the program. It also provides our teachers at those schools with a comprehensive professional development, and it's designed to transform the instructional delivery methods schoolwide. So as far as who's enrolled in AVID itself, the AVID elective student is really a student who can achieve in a rigorous curriculum with support from the AVID elective. So there is actually a very structured curriculum in the AVID elective. These students are in the national academic middle. Now, what that means is they may be the first in their family to attend college and/or complete college. And this is noteworthy because, you know, we live in a county where just under 19% of our residents ages 25 and above hold a bachelor's degree or higher. These are also students who may be historically underserved in four-year colleges or economically disadvantaged. The AVID elective students may have a 2.0 to 3.5 GPA. I say that because these may be students who are in regular education classes and are earning really strong grades, but you really need to challenge themselves if they're to be college and eventually career-ready. They have that academic potential, though. They tend to have those absolute average to high-average test scores. So for once, we're really looking at that student in the middle, and they have the college potential with support. The goal is to ease these elective students into more advanced classes, and these are courses that are chosen based on demonstrated performance. The AVID elective, I said, has a curriculum, but within that curriculum, there are what is known as twice-weekly inquiry-based tutorial study groups. The purpose of those groups, the tutorial sessions, as they're called, is to teach these students how to prepare themselves to lead study groups when they leave us and they go off to a post-secondary learning experience. So we want them to be able to run their own study groups, targeting areas where they may be challenged. It is not a study hall. Giving you a glance at where the programs are currently in place, there are three city high schools, as well as their four feeder schools. And we also wanted to give you a snapshot and at a glance as to what our programs looked like last year, so our 2013 AVID programs. Every AVID school has what is known as the AVID site team. The site team is composed of members of the administration, counseling, as well as each of the content areas. The elective classes, as last year we had 20, we've added two additional sections this year. And last year, we graduated our first class of AVID students at South Hagerstown High School and Williamsport High Schools. So moving into our data for our first graduating AVID students, these are local data, and as you take a look at these percentages, it's important to remember that, again, AVID is designed to prepare students to attend a four-year college experience. Now, that's the ideal. But really, the bottom line is we want to ensure that they're going someplace that aligns with their actual college and career goals after high school. So what we wanted to do is provide you with a breakdown of our AVID seniors from last year, comparing them with other college-bound seniors. And college-bound simply means that these are students who applied to some sort of post-secondary program. So those are the students who are indicated by the red bars. And moving on to additional data, these data are actually shared with us. We report to AVID Center. They have a very comprehensive database. And what's interesting to note is that as they continue to grow nationally and internationally, they're going to be partnering with the Student Clearinghouse, which provides us with a lot of our follow-up data on our students. But as you can see, our students are ahead of other students when compared with the AVID students statewide and nationally. So that's definitely a point of pride for us.
Would you like questions as we go, if they have them?
Of course. Feel free.
I just didn't know if any board members had questions. We'll keep going, and then if you have one, ask it.
I have several, but I was going to wait till the end, so.
All right, well, if you want to call them, that'd be good. I was just looking at some people flipping pages and things, that's why I stopped it.
No problem. All right. And then moving on with our data, what you see here are the demographic data on our 2013 AVID seniors. Again, these data are reported to AVID Center. The critical comparison, I feel, is noteworthy on our more fragile or historically underserved groups. If you look at our males, we have been really looking at what we're providing to our male students, as well as our first-generation collegegoers. In these two areas, we did exceed the state and national percentages. But also, if you look at the data for other races, one of the things that I wanted to note was the fact that out of our 2013 seniors, 25% of them were from other races. So we're really looking at these data, comparing our more historically underserved groups or more fragile learners going off to school. So the next set of data is actually our comparison group data. Our closest group for comparison would be our farm students because our other students do not report whether or not they're first-generation collegegoers. We actually elicit that information from our students whenever they express interest in applying to or being a part of the AVID program. So that is something that is unique to AVID. And also, you may recall that rather diverse AVID elective student profile. So to really pin down data that touches on all those points is a bit difficult, so we focused in on our farms students, our farm students at those schools. So in a previous slide, we pointed out that 97% of our AVID seniors took an AP course, and you can see on this slide that while we only had a few students take the AP exam, they did earn passing scores, outperforming the other farm students at those high schools. This has become a focus area for our AVID site teams with the goal of increasing both the number of students that are prepared for the exam, but also those that take the AP exam and the course that they're enrolled in. This slide looks at the SAT takers. Note that 37% of all farm students in Washington County Public Schools took the SAT, and our AVID students exceeded that percentage of takers. You can't take the SAT without looking at results. So as you look at this slide, keep in mind that, again, only 37% of all Washington County Public School farm students take the SAT. And it's an expectation then for our AVID students. This is a point of pride. We expect all AVID students to be eligible for college enrollment through the attainment of the University System of Maryland Completers, and they performed. Knowing that completing two years of world language is part of the University System of Maryland Completers, we wanted to highlight this accomplishment. We know that we have some work to do on attendance. Our AVID student absences exceed other farm student attendance percentages at both South and Williamsport High Schools for those students that are missing more than 12 days of school during the school year. So that's looking at the purple and green combined. We did front-load the data to you in Section 2 on the last page, where you can reference the specific farm data for our Washington County Public School students, but we just simply wanted to point out that this is an area that we need to work on. And one final point of pride regarding discipline, our AVID students have zero suspensions, no in-school suspensions and no out-of-school suspensions. Recognizing that college-bound students should complete algebra in the eighth grade, this chart looks at the AVID student enrollment since the implementation of AVID in our middle And before we respond to your questions, again, we wanted to point out that the purpose is for us to build a strong AVID college readiness system in each of those school sites. And whenever we do so, we can expect that we will be transforming really the leadership, the instruction, and the overall culture of the school to ensure that college readiness for all of the students, not just the AVID elective students, but it's benefiting all of the schools or all of the students in those particular locations. We did want to provide you two additional resources. We noted those in your front-loaded materials, the AVID website, avid.org, and our rather comprehensive, Your Future Starts Now, WCPS.com site as well.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? Mrs. Bright?
To start off, so when I look at AVID, and again, I've heard wonderful things about the program throughout the country, and I think a National Teacher of the Year was in AVID, I don't recall his name, but remember the article. Here's a couple concerns, or maybe I need just clarification. When we look at AVID, we're looking at often first-generation, college-going students. When we look at the recent legislation in Annapolis, the College and Career Readiness Act, which then is concerned about transition courses and seeing if our students are ready for college and career, we seem to be sort of on the same page, but I'm curious where that overlap is. And we've started middle college as a response to the College and Career Readiness Act. So it seems like there's a lot of different opportunities for these students, and both of them seem to be going after what I call that first generation or some of our more of them seem to be going after what I call that first generation, or some of our more challenged students. When we start looking at our budget process coming up, and I start looking at the cost of certain programs, and I know on Section 1 you had a very, I think, limited cost per student, $60. But when I look up the master plan under turning around the lowest-achieving schools, I look at, and maybe I haven't broken it out correctly, but most of this is funded with Race to the Top and/or TIF money, Avid is. And a lot of that all comes under this project that we have in our master plan. So when I look at a $1.5 million cost for turning around low-achieving schools and divide that, and I know this is just down and dirty, and Dr. Wilcox is, I'm sure, will correct me immediately on this, but when I divide that by the 400 students, that I think you said in the report that you're serving with Avid right now, the 396, I just rounded it up to 400, that comes out to be a much higher per pupil cost than $60. It's several thousand dollars. So I'm just trying to get a handle on which program we think would be most effective. Do we need multiple programs to serve the same population? Are we targeting different outcomes? I'm just trying to wrap myself around this.
Okay. One of the things that I could speak to, the Race to the Top funds, the entire funding is not allocated just for Avid, just a portion of that was. In terms of the teacher incentive funds, our TIF schools actually utilized that to train a number of teachers so that they were able to spread those, the Avid methodologies of teaching practices, school-wide. So that was just a portion of what their professional development was funded.
And I understand that, but under this Project 6, almost all of the narrative on this is about Avid. So I think a fairly significant portion of that $1.5 million must have gone to Avid. And again, I'm not, this isn't a gotcha type of question, I'm just asking, and maybe that's something we have brought back to us. I just think the $60 per pupil is too low, from what I've been able to get from other information.
I know that that, the actual, the RT3 is actually revised, has been revised each year, each year with the funds decreasing for Avid. And where those funds have decreased, my department has picked up those, the necessary expenses. So whenever we looked at the $60 per student, we were looking at, based on the annual membership fees and, you know, the cost of training, spread out over those students. The other piece is, one of the things that you could see in the budget, the annual membership fee is $3,385. That's probably the bulk of the expenses once an Avid site is up and running. Now, our individual schools often will pick up the costs of training for staff who would like to attend regional and national training events as well. So a significant portion of those budgets is not actually going to Avid. It'd be, if I could take a look at that, I could probably give you some more information about that.
I think it'd be helpful to have it broken down, again, because most of this budget seems to be going to Avid. So that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Sure. And that may be just a matter of sharing what the grant details are with you, so I can check with others involved, if you would like me to follow up with you on that point.
And that's up to Dr. Wilcox.
We will follow up, but I think a part of it is a definition of terms. I think Jessica's really talking about the hard cost, and she's not taking into fact the personnel costs, because the kids would have to be served by someone. And so we have made some determination to put some money into additional staffing at these schools, which are now serving this Avid group of kids. So she doesn't really look at that, I don't think, as a cost of her program. But I think as a board member, you may. So let us go back and do a little kind of noodling around it.
And I'll show you what I found.
Well, I'm actually familiar with it.
Yeah, I think you are, probably.
So I just think it's really where we're attributing the personnel cost is what comes up to the difference between the number that was projected for our membership fees and professional development versus the overall cost of the real program.
And then just one other short one, and, because I know other members wanna ask their questions. When I look at, and Avid is considered an elective course, and it's year-long, and I look at the common core standards, and I look at the necessity for the transition courses with the college and career readiness that we're gonna need to give, I reach a point where I'm wondering, where do we find the time in each day to have all these classes? And is that elective class? The Avid, is that a credit-bearing class? And are the transition credit-bearing? And are we? And I know some schools are looking at an eight-period day to try to fill in, so some students can take an additional AP course, or... So I'm just wondering if that's ever been a conversation that you've had, as we start filling up more mandates and more requirements and trying to reach more children, whether we've ever considered adding another period?
The goal, again, is, and as we, the program evolves, refining the student selection process, it's always part of the growth. So it is our goal, by identifying the right students, the students who would be a great fit for this, is that they would not need any sort of remedial courses. Again, Avid is not for students who require additional, like interventions, or any sort of, where they're missing credits or they're behind. These are students who are solidly in the middle. So we have found in the past that the Avid elective does dovetail nicely with the other content areas, because it is designed to support those other content areas. So they may get additional practice with writing and reading in those content areas. And then I mentioned the twice-weekly tutorials. One of the challenges that I think that we've seen in our schools, as we have extended opportunities to more students to participate in honors coursework, and of course, through the open-door policy that College Board has, is that maybe we had students who are entering into these more advanced-level classes who really weren't fully prepared to take on that challenge. So we're really doing a better job limiting the number of courses that those students are enrolling in, and then again, providing them with that support of the Avid elective to ensure that they're able to do well in those classes, and that they are actually able to succeed. I think that the USM Completers data does speak to that as well. We have a number of challenges as we're moving ahead, changing the master schedule, number of periods in the day. And I guarantee, Avid will be one of the many other challenges, but it is my feeling through conversations with principals that it has been worth the impact that it has had on the students, the population, as well as the teachers who have been involved.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I have a question with regard to the chart that shows the post-secondary plans. I'm just wondering if it's, if your involvement stops there, realizing that 2013 was your first class of graduates, is there the thought that you're going to try to keep in touch with some of these students to see if, in fact, they do graduate from a two-year school and perhaps go on to a four-year school, or complete the four-year program? What thoughts there?
That's a good question. We have, you know, data continues to flow, and that's why we were very specific in the front-loaded documents, where we shared what their plans were in May, May and June. And we did note that there were some students who had, they applied to a four-year school, they intended to go to a four-year school, but they, in fact, ended up going or attending a two-year school. We do plan to follow up with those students. We feel that the Student Clearinghouse data will be our answer. We wanna make sure that we are following them through to the end. Another piece that is, it's an exciting component, and it's purely anecdotal, but we have had a lot of these students come back just this past year during their Christmas breaks to push into the Avid tutorial groups and talk with our current Avid students. They've come back, they're coming back, and they're giving back. And that's what we would hope that they would gain from this experience as well, a little bit of community service.
Right.
Are there other questions? Mr. Bailey?
If you could, would you kind of paint for me a picture of an eighth-grade algebra student in Avid? What they do during an entire week?
So a student who is, an Avid student, who's enrolled in the eighth-grade algebra course.
Right.
Would take that course with the other students who are in algebra. But let's say they're new to that course, it is a rigorous course, given the changes with Common Core State Standards. During the twice-weekly tutorials, they're expected to bring in questions, problems, that they may be struggling with in those content areas. And we organize the tutorial groups according to the content area. And what makes these tutorial groups unique is that the student is, again, expected to come with information, not only just the problem, but what they know about the problem. There is a strong metacognitive aspect to the pre-work that goes on prior to entering into the Avid tutorial. Then they participate in what is known as an inquiry-based tutorial group. That student would present the problem, they would present everything that they know about that problem, based on the Cornell notes that they've been taking in class, which is an expectation of Avid, and they would even talk their way up to the point of confusion. At that point, the other students in the tutorial group go around and ask the student questions. For example, what would happen if you isolate x? What happens when you isolate x? And they literally take them through the inquiry process. It's very interesting to see, because, again, the goal is for them to be able to organize and run their own study groups at the college level, to be self-sufficient, to know what questions to ask, and to consult their notes whenever needed, but also to learn to both ask and answer strong questions. So they actually have the same curriculum as the other students, but they're supported by the tutorial.
So the two tutorials are in addition to maybe five times a week meeting in the algebra class?
No, they're in algebra all week long. But in the Avid elective, they have five days in the Avid elective. Two of those days are spent in Avid tutorial.
And the regular algebra teacher does the tutorial?
No. The Avid elective teacher facilitates, but there are tutors assigned to each tutorial group. They're broken out by subject areas. And they are facilitated by, ideally, a college-age tutor. And they are fully trained. They require 16 hours of tutorial training. That's the standard for the program. So we've had opportunities, sometimes the lead teacher may have pushed in, in our high schools and in some of our middle schools, until the teacher pushes in. And one of our middle schools, our principal, actually Jenny Rupenbaum, who's here, runs the tutorial group. We wanted to tape that for you.
Thank you for the...
Well, and we haven't spoken to them the other three days that the student is spending in the Avid elective. And that time is spent helping the student get organized, they have a binder, and there's a process for how they keep their notes, how they keep their homework, getting them to calendar, getting them to goal-set, and also getting them then to think about college and what choices I need to be making today in order to be able to attain those goals in the future. And so it's very much a supportive role that we're providing those other three days. Guest speakers come in and talk about careers, and there's a lot of wrapping that student with that college knowledge and that support, and providing those tools and those systems that they can utilize in order to access their own learning.
How far off would I be if I said that this sounds a great deal like talented and gifted instruction, talented and gifted program, for those who were not historically identified as talented and gifted? That you're reaching a larger group of talented and gifted kids in the middle, who, in previous talent-gifted programs, did not qualify? Is that correct?
These may be students who have yet to mature in a given subject area. They are, we're seeking out that hidden potential in the students, but many of the Avid methodologies, for example, that inquiry-based tutorial, does come from, they come from gifted and talented strategies, methodologies.
So, Mr. Bailey, I think probably a fairer comparison. Oftentimes, the kids that are in our GT programs are cognitively just further along, they're in that top 2% of kids, and they're gonna do well, and Jessica will hate this, but they're gonna do well in spite of us at some level. Hopefully because of us, but sometimes in spite of us. But these are kids oftentimes who, there's no expectation from the home that they're gonna go off to college. And so we're creating that expectation. But they're also kids who we see potentially, and we see that they are bright young people, but they just don't know perhaps how bright they are yet. You know, the interesting thing is, I don't think my son or daughter have ever even dreamed that there was an opportunity for them for anything but a four-year college somewhere. I mean, in our house, both parents are college-educated, we both have advanced degrees. I actually talked to my son this weekend, I was with Mr. Reiden, I went to a college game, a basketball game with him. I don't think he's ever in his life thought that he wouldn't be there. Many of these kids, most of these kids, have never had that set of expectations placed on them. So Jessica and her team, Beth and her team, are really kind of doing the work that just hasn't gotten done with these young kids. We're showing them that there is a great opportunity for them to go to college, and then we're giving them the skills they may not have in order to get there. You heard reference to something called Cornell notes. Cornell notes are a reference to college, and they are a style of note-taking that we know makes kids more successful. What's interesting to me is, when you get into an Avid school, the spillover is powerful. Because not only are the Avid kids taking Cornell notes, you look across the curriculum, and because the teachers are trained, they see the value of it, and so other kids are using it. And I think Jenny could probably speak to that as well at her school. There are just some tremendous spill-overs for us. So, you know, Mr. Bailey, I think you're right on. We are identifying kids that really are highly talented academically, they just may not know yet how talented they are.
Good, good, good description. And I think we're changing the culture for a lot of those students and their families.
Absolutely. Are there other questions? I'm gonna take just a couple. First, to follow up sort of on Mrs. Brightman's question about the credit, I know as kids are trying to pack their high school schedules with, you often come into conflict with, can you take band, and can you take all the different types of electives that you want? This is a full-credit-bearing class, but it's gotta come at the expense of other opportunities for those kids, I would think?
It's an elective credit. They have done a beautiful job managing to weave this into the schedules. And we've even seen students, it's interesting, the opportunities that Avid has provided for other students as well. We have had students actually go in, upperclassmen go in and serve as Avid tutors, because they wanna get that additional experience. So it has not posed any problems as of now, where we have seen challenges, again, with the shift to the new schedule, fitting that into the master schedule. But in the years past, when we were on the block schedule, what they were doing was having to back up the Avid elective to a content, a core class. The disadvantage of that was, if you back it up to an AP language course, not everybody who is in Avid may be a good fit for AP Lang. So actually, this new schedule allows these students to have more opportunities to align the courses that they're taking with their ability to perform and do well in those courses.
And if I may, Dr. Harding, I think the other thing is, is you have to look at what the absent Avid, what the choices would have been anyway. So yes, there is the potential to see that these young people have to give something up, but my sense is what they're giving up... up, but my sense is what they're giving up isn't band or orchestra or something that they would have been engaged in anyway.
No, well, I'm thinking of it from, well, I'll just be honest, as a parent of an eighth-grader who's about to go to ninth grade.
Right.
Who's going through that process now of, and I'm looking at a whole series of students now who get an entire elective all four years, that somebody was creative enough to figure out a way to make that fit in those students' schedules. And as I go through this process with my kids, I would hope that our administrators are going to be creative enough to say, yes, your son may like this and this and this, and we're going to find a way to make that work. I haven't been through that yet, so I don't know, but I look forward to working with the team to see if it works.
So do we.
[laughter]
I'll report back. And finally, the, maybe I'm just missing, on the chart that has the attendance information?
Yes.
It says Avid compared with Farm.
Yeah.
Is there a percent of, I mean, is that a percent difference between Avid and Farm? Is it?
We do provide you...
Are the Farm kids there?
Okay. We do, in fact, if you can follow up with this, but we do provide you with those percentages. We did have those spelled out in the section two of the last chart.
It's not in the PowerPoint?
No, it is not in the PowerPoint. But what we really wanted to do was highlight, this is an area where we know we need to grow.
Sure.
And just really just be honest and speak to that, that our numbers didn't look as good as they did for the other Farm students.
Great. Okay, that's very helpful.
But I do want to thank, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present here today. And I really, I know not all of our principals, not all of our Avid coordinators, not all of our Avid site team members could be here, but this is a wonderful opportunity for them to. Our principals have been very invested in its implementation and have gone above and beyond, I would say, for these students. So for what it's worth, I do want to offer thanks, my gratitude to them.
I want to thank both of you for bringing the presentation. It is, as you can probably see here, we spend much of our time talking about legislation and budgets and things that are all very important because ultimately they do impact kids and our staff members every day. But I think you can also see that when we're talking about actual kids and what they're doing and how they're succeeding and what our team is doing to make them succeed, the board sort of comes alive, and that's, I mean, that's exciting.
Thank you.
Next, we have board member committee reports. Mrs. Harschman, curriculum?
Curriculum met on January 31st at 11:15, and we had supervisor for elementary reading and literacy, Hope Fuss, present, Carol Sager, who is a central office lead teacher, for a wonderful presentation on foundations program. It is a spelling instruction for elementary. She was very articulate and just did a wonderful job presenting that to us, and I think everyone might enjoy seeing that, so maybe we can bring her to the regular meeting. They indicated that 30 minutes a day is spent for this particular activity and that grades one, or K through three, are doing the spelling instruction, and she presented a little lesson where we all learned to spell better. So it was just fantastic, some of the methods and the little keys that the kids are picking up on how to unlock words. So it's just a really great program. She also indicated that some of the schools have not yet picked up on it, so hopefully they will, and I think it would be beneficial to all the kids.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Harschman. Mrs. Williams, finance?
Yes, the finance committee will meet on February 11th at 3:30 here in the board conference room at Commonwealth Avenue.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, policy review?
Policy committee met January 28th. We reviewed regulations involving participation on athletic teams and extracurricular activities and the board member expense regulation. We just made some stylistic and grammatical changes to those to recommend to the superintendent. The greater part of the meeting was actually spent on revising the policy on policy setting, which I discovered had actually been miscoded. It should be BG instead of BF. We're working on that, we'll continue working on that at our next meeting, which will be the 11th of February at 1:45 in the board, here in the boardroom. We will also then meet on the 25th of February at 1:45, so we're doubling up our meetings to get caught up with the state regulations that are being tossed our way.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Bailey, facilities?
Facilities committee, composed of Mr. Reidenauer, Mrs. Brightman, and myself, met on January the 28th. We heard update concerning the Bester Elementary School project and a possible completion date and the schedule as it rolls out pertaining to staffing and getting people into the new school. We heard an update on West City and where it is in the process now of planning for The demolition and repurpose of 820 Commonwealth Avenue was on our agenda. We have heard over and over again what will happen to this building and what will be remaining after the demolition. Heard some proposals that came from South High and Clear Spring High School on interests that they have concerning their facilities. Facilities master plan will be coming to the board relatively soon, perhaps as early as April or May for final approval, and that the FIAC committee, Facilities Enrollment Committee, will be looking at new boundary lines perhaps in the future and have met, did meet on January the 28th to start looking at those proposed ideas. We spent some time talking about the impact that pre-K might have on our system, and that will be an ongoing discussion that we will try to stay on top of as far as facilities are concerned. And that concluded our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Reidenauer, HR?
HR committee met Thursday, the 30th. Two items were on the agenda. We were presented with some beginnings of social media policy and as well as a drug and alcohol, drug and alcohol policy that will be making their way through the channels and then finally through the board at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. Mrs. Brightman, anything from MABs?
Nothing to add to Mrs. Cade's report. Thank you.
And Mr. Grunendike, anything from student government?
Student government will be meeting this Thursday, the 6th, at Tech High at 9:30 in the morning.
Great. Anybody else have any committees or updates of that sort? Conference planning, anything to report? No? Okay, great. Future agenda items, we will have our, let's see, our budget work session on February 18th at 1 o'clock. We also, on the meeting on the 18th, will have consideration and approval of the new vision for Washington County public schools, as well as the budget adjustments for the second quarter, provided they pass the finance committee. Then moving into March, we are going to have a joint meeting with the commissioners on March 4th where we'll discuss some legislative initiatives as well as the budget adjustments. We'll also have an opportunity to give them a tour of our new facility. Board member comments. Mr. Grunendike?
Nothing at this time.
Mrs. Harschman?
Nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Nothing at this time.
Mrs. Brightman?
I'll pass, thank you.
I have nothing either.
Mr. Bailey?
It's all up to you, Paul.
We're not coming back to this building for the next meeting. I got my calculator out and figured out how many years I'd been crossing the threshold of this building, in something like 55 years. So we'll miss it, but Richard is not prepared to sing memories today, so we will...
Julie's going to sing for us.
No. You know, old habits, I guess, are hard to die, and I'm not regretting leaving, but this place has a lot of memories. Thank you.
Mr. Reidenauer?
It does have a lot of memories, some good, some not so good. But I would like, I'd like to congratulate Boyd and his staff for keeping this thing up and running with, I remember from, I think it was Inherit the Wind, when they talked about it being kept together by a spit and sealing wax, because that's pretty much what has happened over these years. And also to all the people, starting with Dr. Hardings, who made the notion for the...
The resolution?
Resolution, to do a real study on this, to Harry Reynolds, who came in and said, this is the worst building I've ever been in in my life. And then Dr. Wilcox and everyone else and the members of this board who had the courage to make a decision that a lot of people probably thought would never happen, to make a decision and see it through, and finally put us in a building that is, you know, will be a shining star for the county and for Washington County Board of Education. I'm very proud of this group for their efforts. So looking forward to going there. I've been traveling to that building for 10 years, and believe me, I am thrilled it's about time that we're there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenauer. I want to, before I say something about this building, I want to acknowledge all the people who were involved in all of the all-county musical events that have occurred in the last number of weeks. Both of my children were in, well, one was in all-county orchestra and the other in band. That's not to brag about my kids, although I guess I just did. But it is to say that I attended both concerts, and as somebody who spent most of my time in high school in the band, in the jazz band, doing musical theater, it blew my doors off, what high-quality events those were. The kids were fantastic, the adults clearly taught those children a lot. My children all learned that even though you don't know somebody, if you can speak the language of music together, you immediately have something in common. It is a fantastic program for this county and something that everybody who has anything to do with it should be proud of. It certainly made me proud, not only as a dad, but to be associated with, with the school system, to see what we are able to do for those young people. So please to Dr. Miles and Dr. Domain, everybody's a part of that fine arts chain and staff, thank you. It really was a fantastic couple of evenings for my family. And I too want to add my thanks, I guess, in addition to what Mr. Reidenauer and Mr. Bailey have already said, I want to add my thanks to all the employees who worked in this building for as long as they have. As we've said many times, I never heard anybody complain about it, I don't know, maybe they did when I wasn't around, but people came here and worked hard, committed to doing what was right for kids, and doing that every day without worrying about whether this was the nicest facility that one might want to come to work in. Many of them said it's a dump, but it's our dump. Maybe it still is, but we've got something new, and I hope it, I hope it will really serve this community well. I believe it will. But just as somebody who likes to go to work in a place where you feel good going in every day, that so many people put in so much effort and so much energy, so much commitment to the kids, and this building really speaks volume to the, volumes to the commitment that they have to the young people that we all serve. And I just want to thank all of those administrators, custodians, everybody who worked out of this building for so long. As Mr. Bailey said, it's been a long time for this building. Mr. Unger tells us that the board first moved into this building in 1944, which would mean it's been 70 years that we've been in this facility. And we're going to begin a new chapter in a couple of weeks. And recognizing Mr. Bailey as the, sort of the, I guess, the president pro tempore of the board, sort of the dean of our group here, and somebody who, beyond 50 years coming into this building, probably more as a student in Washington County, I'd like to pass the gavel down to Mr. Bailey and ask you to bang the gavel and close our final meeting in this building.
Thank you so very much. It's a great privilege to do this and conclude today's meeting. We now stand adjourned.
[laughter] Thank you.